I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Our usual custom is to have some public comments on items that are not on the agenda, and I think you all know the rules. I do, there are a couple of folks here. I have one from Karen, and also John Riggs is here, and, yeah, okay. Like that, name came, went right out of my head. But we know who you are, and we'll go on. And, two? Oh, that's okay. Karen, why don't we start with you? Looks like you're back on Sassy Cab.
Oh gee.
Make sure that, hit that mic to make sure it's on there. No, turn the switch up.
Switch up.
Okay. There you go.
Name, ring, and serial number?
Please.
Karen Redston. 5007 Ninth Street, uh, telephone booth?
Nope. Nope, no, 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 don't do that. Unless you want some calls.
It's night. Um, my neighbor took a cab Saturday, and he's upped it back up to seven dollars flat fee to get in and shut the door, had to go anywhere. So what was supposed to be a five dollar thirty cent trip turned out to be a seven dollar thirty cent trip. Now, I understand Portland raised their fees, gave approval last week, was on the news, and Tim, the owner of Sassy's, was on TV, saying, "Oh yeah, we've raised our rates for about eighty an hour and a seven dollar minimum fee." And so I called Karen and asked, and he had not come before you folks to get permission again. I know this is a little war going on, I feel it's kind of a losing battle with Karen, but his fee right now has been raised back up to seven dollars to get into the cab and just shut the door, three dollar eighty cent trip.
Okay, need to check with the staff here on what the process is, and what's happening.
Yes, Mayor members of the commission, I received an email from Ms. Redstone, I think a week and a half ago. I've also been in contact with Mr. O'Connor, I believe his name is, Sassy's Cab. He and I have a tentative meeting scheduled in, I think, within the next week to discuss this matter, and also bring it back to the commission, which I think was the direction. We were waiting until the Portland decision came forward, that has come before us. He actually initiated the call to me, so we shall be bringing this matter before the city commission, probably within the next two commission meetings.
But what do we do in the meantime if he's charging a rate which isn't okay?
My understanding is that he was not charging a different rate than what he would, had been currently charging. I will contact him again to make sure that he complies with what was originally in existence until such time the commission has.
My neighbor is also prepared to call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Give you some more evidence?
Yeah.
All right.
This is like before the fifth president's having one.
Okay. I guess my question is, is if we have an ordinance in place that says that this is what the rules are, and if this business is not following the rules, what is the established procedure to deal with that until he is following the rules?
Well, again, it's an enforcement issue, and the city will take him up on it. It's just a matter of, you know, unless, I don't have the verification of rates or anything, and that's something that I was going to discuss with Mr. O'Connor.
I guess, I guess the problem I have with this is that unlike some other situations, a lot of the folks that are using the taxi cab service on a regular basis are folks that don't really, you know, can't really afford to be, you know, dealing with a two dollar rate increase or whatever that hasn't gone through regulation. So if, if this business is doing that, how are they going to refund, or, you know, I mean, that's a real question, and it needs to be dealt with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
In response to what you're bringing forward tonight, I appreciate that, that you're willing to come up here and bring it to our attention. The, the issue I have is, is that it's very doubtful that I would be sympathetic to a person that comes before this commission that wants to raise the rates when he's screwing the public. Now, that's, that's as blunt as I can get. I don't appreciate it.
I know, like, most of my complex are disabled, whether mentally challenged or physically challenged, and they have to screw down the cabs because they can't drive.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Nakamura will probably give my sentiments to, to the owner of Sassy Cabs.
Karen, thank you for bringing it to us again. We appreciate the last time you were here, and then we'll see that it's done.
Okay. Very much.
Thank you. I think we'll change pace a little bit, and John Riggs is here to give us a report from the sister city committee. John?
Last time I was here, I had to stand. My name is John Riggs. I live at 16251 South Swan Avenue in the city. As far as a report to the trips to Tadashina is concerned, I personally went to represent our sister city committee here in the city, more or less to firm up our alliance with our sister city, if we don't get to see them that often being forty-five hours apart. We were also over there for business, of course. We have an AET person that we send over each year, and he's an assistant English teacher. It was contracted through us, through the city of Tadashina, and through the Board of Education, and we have to support the teachers for four years.
John, I'm going to interrupt you a second. I think we have to replace the battery in that, in that microphone. It'll be just a second.
I hope it wasn't a girl, it must have been.
No, I don't think you did it. We seem to have more technical difficulties with microphones than ten cities wrapped up in one. There we are. Not necessarily to repeat what you said.
Okay. I had some personal, you might say selfish reasons for going to Japan, too. I was studying the agriculture over there, and particularly their Japanese gardening methods, because we have a peace garden in the city, or in the city, and we are trying to revamp that as well. So I did a lot of observation of their techniques over there. We were there also to prepare for our visit from them, when they send students in March each year, and we will be receiving at least six to eight students, and two adult chaperones during the year of 2002, March, the month of March. We were laying the groundwork also for the 30th anniversary, which will be approaching us in three years. We have 27 years under our belt, being established in 1974. But most of all, we were over there for an exchange of peace and culture, and that's what we were all about. Any questions?
Well, John, I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that you and the other committee members have put in for a long time on this. I've been, this is my second trip, and I appreciate the invitation to go with you. I can't imagine a finer time, finer relationship between two peoples.
It was great.
My wife came back, and she opened up the computer, and she wrote on the screensaver. She said, "The Tadashina people are the friendliest people in the world."
They are.
And it was outstanding trip.
I know. I get kind of misty-eyed thinking about it, too, because we had a great time over there. We learned a great deal, and we, hopefully, hopefully, we taught them a great deal about our culture, too. When we left, we were all smiling, everybody was teary-eyed. It's like leaving your family members.
Thank you for all the good work, John.
Thank you, sir, very much for your support.
Alan?
Good evening, gentlemen, and Lelani. My name is Alan Bedore. I live at the Clackmit Park. I am the official skate park host down there. And I'm here in regards to a notice that I received yesterday from the manager of the Clackmit Park, Mr. Larry Potter. Now, what I had done last week was I had requested a leave of absence to take care of some personal business that's very pressing right now in my life. And I had not heard from Larry Potter until yesterday, when I received a note on my door, and it reads as follows, "Alan, you need to call me as soon as possible. It is time for you to move on." Larry Potter. Now, that's not the kind of leave of absence I had in mind, gentlemen. I believe my work down there at the skate park is very important to the community. It's my desire to continue in that vein. I believe the action taken against me is punitive in nature, and I believe I deserve a hearing before being summarily dismissed and given three days to vacate the premises.
I believe we're in the personnel matter here, which is under the auspices of the manager and the park director, so if you will, if you want to make an appointment, you want to talk with him?
Sure, that's fine.
With Dee, or whatever process might be here.
We can do that.
First of all, you've got to go that way. And if you're not satisfied with what happens after that, then certainly you're welcome to ask us for what redress you may think is fair, but we should deal with them first before coming here.
Okay, sir. I will do that.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick Winterhalter, 1215 Eighth Street. I come tonight just to bring something to your attention, and you may be aware, the enhancement grants have, or the announcement for those went out on August 13th, and their due date is Friday, the 7th of September. And I think the city has done a great job of putting together a nice comprehensive package and asking for some good information that I think will make the grants much better. Many of the neighborhood associations, which may be involved in, you know, may generate some interest in those grants, they don't have general meetings, or have not had a general meeting yet. And so I think we're, there are going to be a lot of active folks in the city who do this on a part-time basis, that I think find the timeline a little bit short, and wondering if we could consider an extension for this, you know, this grant period, and I'm not sure what that would be, or if you would consider it. There may be some other things there, but I just see if you would like to do that. Appreciate it.
Commissioner, look like you wish to speak to this?
Actually, as chairman of the CIC, the first time I think I heard about it was like right at the very beginning of the summer, and which was kind of tough, because the neighborhood associations don't even conduct business during the summer. So it was a challenge to try to figure out what to do with the grants. And I don't know, is there some sort of restrictions, or why we can't extend the grants?
Mr. Cosgrove is the operator of the program.
No restrictions whatsoever. I was just under the impression directly and individually from some of the commissioners that they wanted this process to get going. So I put together a timeline, and I've lived by that timeline, but if you want to extend it out, that's your pleasure.
When does the actual metro enhancement committee meet?
As, as needed, like the CIT.
Oh, as needed. Okay. And do we have one scheduled? I saw, actually, in the Oregonian, scheduled for like sometime in the end of September?
We do, and we don't. That's the date that's been selected, was September 27th. There's been some conflict that I've been, that has been brought to my attention already. So I don't have a problem with changing that date to whatever, whatever the commission, plus the four citizen members decide they want that to be.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Mr. Cosgrove, is this the metro enhancement committee that has never met, and has never formally been?
Well, kind of. We did have one meeting that three people attended, so we didn't really meet, no.
I wasn't there.
No, you weren't.
I understand, okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Doug? I know some of the general meetings of neighborhood associations, some won't even occur till October. Some of them are having their steering committee meetings this month, and then we're going to have a general meeting next month. Mr. Cosgrove, do, have we had a, have we had a plethora of stuff coming into us in terms of?
A plethora? I like that word.
A flood of applications.
We've had four, as of today, four applications. And I sent the applications out to the world, so I'm assuming that they're all going to come in by 5:00 PM tomorrow. But extending the deadline is not a, a personal hardship on me, if, if you're considering that at all. So if you want to do that, feel free.
I would, I would tend to lean towards, given the fact that we're not scheduled till the 27th of September, the likelihood is that meeting is probably going to get pushed back a couple more weeks, just because of what I've been seeing in the email. I don't see why we couldn't extend the, the grant deadline to the end of September, understanding that we're probably not going to meet until sometime in October.
I guess since, I happen to know that the Neighborhood Association of Oregon is coming up shortly, and you're the only, as far as I know, you're the only Neighborhood Association person that's come up to speak to it. As I said, some general meetings aren't until October, but I would, I would guess that steering committees would still be in a position to put forward a grant application, would they not?
Certainly.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think actually, well, there, general membership meetings would have been in August and September, so August is, of course, too late. But I have no problem with extending it till, I was thinking October 1st is the date I was thinking about.
Karen?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Because I did hear someone say that most of the neighborhoods and associations don't start meeting till October.
Most of them, I think they meet in September.
I said a general, there were some general meetings that wouldn't be held until October, but they probably would have steering committee meetings in September.
They alternate the months, general meeting one month, steering committee the next. So most of them will have some sort of a meeting in September.
So 1st of October would work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry if that puts a crimp in your plans.
Doesn't bother him.
I know, doesn't bother him.
Anyone else? Okay. We're down to public hearing.
Great. Agenda item 3.1 is the proposed ordinance number 01-1027 for the vacation of Otelle Row Street between Front Avenue and Frederick Street. Mayor members of the commission, our recommendation is to adopt proposed ordinance number 01-1027 to vacate Otelle Street between Front Avenue and Frederick Street while maintaining a utility easement across the entire right-of-way. Mr. Collison is here to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Yes, pictures.
That's good.
There are a picture, small one.
Why don't you take that off?
Actually, we have it in the handout.
It's the same exact one they have.
It's colored, though.
This, this is in color, if you want to see it.
No, 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 that's fine.
Well, as some of you may be aware or not, vacation of a street is a two-step process. First step is to do a resolution, to initiate the, and announce it, which you've done already. And so this is the second part, which is an ordinance, which we are asking you to adopt, based on the resolution, based on the application, the signatures that were obtained by the applicant. So as far as I can tell, it's 100% approved by all the adjacent and nearby residents, so.
Yeah, that was a question.
We don't see any problem with it from the city standpoint. However, we do want to maintain a utility easement across the entire, there is already water line going through there, so. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Actually, I went over there and drove around and looked at it, and the only question I have is, it kind of seems like there's a fire hydrant kind of catty corner. And so I was trying to figure out how you would have like two separate easements, or is there like a one water main, what's south, and then, then an extension to the hydrant? I'm trying to figure out how the easements would work.
Well, that's why we're just going to keep an easement throughout the entire right-of-way, rather than trying to define specific easements.
Would be the whole road?
Right.
Okay, so would there be, because I think that, I thought that like vacants, they would actually own that land.
True.
And then, would there be some sort of restrictions, like you can't build a house on it?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
They're looking to, I think the main reason was to help legitimize or give them the full size of the lot that they needed in order to make it a legal lot, because they're in a section where the width of the lots is like 49.75 feet wide by 100, and we require 5,000 square feet, so that don't, you know. So this helps them just make a legitimate lot, and, plus it gets it off our records. They maintain it, you know, and you, I'm surprised you could find it, I mean.
It was, it was hard.
It, it's just there, you know, it's just.
With Rock Street right there, there's a good cross-section road.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Other question?
Well, generally, I'm opposed to street vacations, but in this case, I'd probably go along with it. My, my question is, and on this, in the picture that we have, and it might be more obvious in the color picture that you have, it would appear that Frederick Street has not been vacated according to the, to the plat map that you supplied us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, it looks to me like there's some buildings in the right-of-way. And I guess my question becomes, once we vacate these things, are we making sure that people aren't building on, in, in the, in the right-of-way that we maintain an easement on? And are we making sure in the regular city streets that we have, obviously, this is a gravel street rather than a paved street, but are we, are we taking any pains to make sure that folks aren't building in, in the, in the city right-of-way? And is there, and I suppose there is a question for the attorney here somewhere, is there a timeframe at which, if someone has built a building in, in a city right-of-way, that, that, that building becomes legitimate?
In a word, no. There is no adverse possession against the city.
Thank you, sir.
I'll try to answer that in two steps. First, we have, right now, we have a very active checking process that we didn't have in the past, whereby both planning and engineering are reviewing individual residential home site plans, and we didn't used to do that. So I, I, too, noticed that this one house appears to be perhaps in the right-of-way. Now, I will point out that the ortho photo that's overlaid on this may or may not be absolutely accurately in the right sync with what you see as tax lot lines. So there may or may not be a problem here, but I, too, share that issue. It does look bad on here, so.
Thank you for that.
Actually, just to let you know, I did drive that, and the north part of it's gravel, and then it's actually a nice street with sidewalks and everything else, to Holcomb. So there is a road that continues through there.
Frederick, yes.
Yeah, Fred, well, yeah, Frederick.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Mayor.
I think we have to go to a public hearing here.
No.
Oh, it is a public. Any warning on this? Necessary?
No.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against this vacation? No one here? I'll close the public hearing. No, your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve proposed ordinance 01-1027.
Second it.
Ordinance 01-1027, an ordinance vacating an undeveloped portion of Otelle Rose, in parentheses, street between Front Avenue and Frederick Street, as shown in the recorded plat of Clackmit Heights in Perrin supplemental, Clackmit County.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Newey?
Aye.
Commissioner Benville?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. This comes back to us next time on the second reading.
Agenda item 4.1 is Clackmit RV Park future operations. Mayor members of the commission, the city staff recommends that the city continue to operate the RV park at Clackmit until such time as the waterfront master plan is accepted and the phase, including this area is funded for construction. Mayor members of the commission, Ms. Dee Craig is here to answer any questions you may have regarding this matter. I believe Commissioner Benville contacted the city and asked for some additional information that was provided, I believe, in part of the staff report. So with that, I'll leave it open for discussion.
Okay, I'll, I'll break the ice. A couple things. I went out there Saturday and drove around and kind of looked at how many vacancies we had, and what type of RVs we had there, and, and I even asked, you know, which ones the park hosts were in, and that type of thing, and, and I was curious about, there, I figured there was about four of them that I thought were kind of in, per se, distasteful condition. It almost meant, it almost seemed like they were there for a long time, and started getting collecting junk, and, and that type of thing. And I know in the past, that's one of the reasons that the people have been really trying to close the RV park, is about, because it's so unsightly. And I didn't see a lot of that. I think that we, you know, there's, Dee gave me some information about how long they can stay. There is some rules about how long they can stay, and I don't know how well we enforce that, but I think that, you know, collecting of clutter and that type of thing can be prevented that. And also, I think it's very important that the hosts that we have there are showing a good example, and that they're, they're showing a clean place, a welcoming spot, and you know where the park host is, and that type of thing. I, I look at these, these revenues, and to me, to me, they're quite significant, and even during the winter months, I, and I just winged, say, October to, to April, you know, even in the winter months of last year was almost $21,000, and in '99 was $16,000. I think I, I forwarded that email to all of you of the questions that I had asked Dee. So I, I think at this time, with the, the situation with the budget, and that we continue to have the, the revenue until we follow up with the completion of the water park master plan and the development of it. So that's just my comments towards it.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Ms. Craig, you've got, along with this sheet, came a, kind of a financial summary here. And the way I've looked over the financial summary, it looks like there's going to be the net revenue of 48,500.
Correct.
Where is that in your budget?
Well, all of the money.
Where's it plugged in?
Okay, well, it's, that is difficult to say, because funds that come in are shown as revenue, but they go to the general fund. And then when I ask for my budget, you see a budget, and then you see the revenue, which offsets it. So if I didn't, I mean, it's not specific for one item, it just offsets the total budget.
Okay.
So if we don't have any revenue from, say, the RV park, or from Clackmit Park, when it comes next year, either the general fund is going to have to ante up another $48,000, or Parks and Recreation is going to have to decrease their budget by 48,000, or someone else in the city.
Well, yeah, that doesn't make, yeah, because just because it's your income.
Yeah, someone in the city will have to eat $48,000.
Right, okay. And it, it's very likely that it could, it could continue on and even be a little more prosperous, depending on the fishing season and those kinds of issues.
Yes. I mean, if you notice, we had a fairly substantial increase over last year. We've had a few more people camping, it was a good fishing season, we had an early spring. All of, you know, the fishing season certainly helps.
Okay, thank you.
I've noticed that outside of the RV park, on a couple of occasions, there've been tents pitched.
That is correct.
I presume they are not part of the revenue stream.
They are not part of the revenue stream, and when we notice them, they are cited and asked to remove them and leave. It is an RV camp.
The, and you, you pointed it out, I've got a more general question, I brought it up at a time when there wasn't the current city manager. Is there a mechanism by which revenues that come into a particular department cannot be committed to that department? It would seem to me that that would be a positive incentive for, for those departments to seek revenues.
Yes, there are dedicated funds within the general fund, but that would be a budget committee, city commission decision at that time.
Yeah, I don't think it's ever come at that, that level, but I think it's something that we really ought to take a look at, because if, if it isn't, if it isn't dead certain that the money will come to the department, then perhaps the, the real pressure, or the interest to go ahead and bring in revenue wouldn't be there.
Commissioner Holliday?
And then the flip side of that is, is that, you know, if, if a specific department has revenue, their revenue becomes dedicated, then department heads might become overeager in charging fees and finding other ways to.
But that always has to come through the city commission.
Well, theoretically, so do taxi raises. I'm just, just, just bringing the flip side of the argument.
Commissioner Hewitt?
That's all right.
Under the present financial woes of Oregon City, I am, for anything that brings in revenue for any amount of time until we get the waterfront master plan done, I am, I am going to speak at every meeting possible to let people know that we're not a solvent city. We are in financial difficulties into the future, and those people that may have, have touched the budget committee, or heard anything about the budget committee, it's a shock of what's going to happen down the road, a year from now and a year and a half from now. now. So, I just, that's my comment and that will be my continued comment at many meetings.
Commissioner.
Actually, through my little speech, I didn't hear your comments in regards to how you would enforce how long they stay and how you could keep the, the sites a little cleaner.
Well, we do notice them when they become, you know, a problem. And we have, in fact, had Nancy and Peter Bush go down there on occasions when we've had a concern. We do limit the stays till 10, for 10 days and we give them a notice at the end of the 10 days that they need to move. We very rarely grant an extension. In the year and a half, almost two years that I've been here, I have granted one extension. There was a family down there. The husband was in the hospital. The wife could not drive the RV and he was going to be released 24 hours later. And so, we granted them extension to stay until he was able to be there. We, you know, we go down there daily. We collect the fees daily and my staff stops and talks to people about the concerns. Some of the major concerns have been with some of our park hosts and that is one of the reasons that we usually turn over park hosts about every two months so that they don't get so entrenched and start adding out from their RV.
Commissioner Neely.
I'm going to support the extension. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit reluctant to make it as open ended as it is because in the phase funding and the areas funded for construction, we don't know what that is. I mean, length of time. My preference would be to extend it on a season by season basis and it perhaps gives greater incentive if the desire is not to have an RV park there for the long term to find the funding to do something else. And if I might put a motion forward at this time, we're still going to discuss it, of course, is I, I move to extend the RV through the next season, meaning through the end of next year.
So, next September, you would expect us to have a discussion again?
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Ms. Craig, what's a, what's a season? Is that a 12-month season?
Well, generally, the camping, the big camping season is during the summer. We had originally talked about closing the RV park at the end of July, which meant we'd be closing it in the middle of the summer. And the commission then said, well, we do it at the end of the summer season and that is generally seen as when school starts again. So, that we were extended into September and that's why I'm back here again in September.
Last year's memo, September 30th.
Yes, yes.
Okay, is, is there a reality that there might be a season beyond that?
Oh, yes. I mean, you can see the.
Well, that's what I was referring to. I didn't have it right here.
But I think what Commissioner Neely is suggesting is that we review this again in September of 2002 and I let you know what we've been collecting, where we are on the plans with the waterfront park and what the proposed plan is for this site. Is that my understanding?
Well, then I'm, then I'm totally confused because you're going to keep it open for the season. The season's at the end of September. The season is closing then.
No, no.
I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
No, no. Next September, a year from now.
September 2002, I will be here with another report.
Got it.
I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Actually, just my last comment was that if, maybe your reasoning for seasons versus January 1 to January 1 type of thing, can I understand what, why you're.
Well, she's here now, I guess. And it's the end of September. We, we originally extended it for two seasons, I believe, a couple of years ago. And it, I think that season that we were talking about at that time ended in Sep, in September, so.
So, maybe we should, rather than season, because that's kind of subjective, we have like a, a date, you know, September 30th or something.
I think that's what he was saying. September 30 of 2002.
And this time next year.
And I'll amend my motion to so reflect that.
You don't need to amend it. I'll just agree to it.
Any further discussion?
I, yeah, I have one comment, if you mind, sir. I want to make it clear. I, I'll support the motion. I'm not sure that all of the numbers that we have are, are really realistic in the fact that we got revenue numbers, but we didn't really get expense numbers to speak of. Well, the problem is, is the way the budget's put together. And so, it's difficult to say the hours of maintenance and other kinds of things that go into Clackmet Park that, that don't come over. I recall the discussions that we've had about the RV park as, as the, the quote profit versus the expenses of, of not being nearly, you know, this amount of money. Now, I understand what you talk about revenue is a totally different issue. Okay? So, I, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, I'm going to, I'll support it this year, but, and, and I think we should have a place in Oregon City for this kind of RV camping. I don't support it where it's at. The other issue is, is that we've talked about, we've heard about, there is an alleged parks or waterfront master plan. The, the guys apparently took a couple of months off or, you know, I, when, when do we expect to see the plan come back for, to be approved?
There was a work session on that. Were you not here? It was been in the past 30 days.
We didn't have a work session in the past 30 days.
On the waterfront plan?
No, we did not.
I'm sorry. It was.
You had a public hearing.
It was a public hearing and.
That's right.
Open house and then they presented it to, I'm sorry, to the Planning Commission. I knew I was at a meeting. The night that the Planning Commission and the City Commission both met on the same night.
Hard for us to be there.
Right. It was in, and it's, they were getting feedback from them. I believe it now goes through the formal process with them and comes back to you in November.
All I'm saying is, I know that it's been delayed substantially from when we expected to see it. And I don't want to see any more delays going on.
It's in the Planning Bureau process or the Planning Commission process.
It was mentioned here. So, that makes it germane.
Also, Commissioner Holliday, the 6,005 that I showed as expenses, I can break that down by hour, et cetera. I have that on the TRIMS program. I did not break it out for you, but I can. That shows how many hours of time and everything that we put into it.
I understand, but I, I think that, you know, and, and we, we've been lucky also the last couple of seasons that we haven't had major repairs to do down there.
That's correct.
Only because of low water.
And I think that really.
That can't go on forever.
Right. And I think if we have a major flood or something that creates some major repairs, then we need to revisit our decision at that time.
You mean when?
I choose to say if, you choose to say when.
If, if in the current life of the RV park. One thing that isn't indicated here, I, I was thinking that he's being kind of picky, but I don't know if this includes the actual cost of utilities that are being used.
Yes, in the RV park. They are separated out.
6,500 is that, too. Very good.
Is there someone else down here?
I just wanted to say, my recollection is, is that I had a gentleman sitting here on a, on an A easel or whatever and I saw the master plan and I saw the docks for the boats and all this kind of stuff.
That was the first time around. We hadn't had a.
Okay, was that months and months ago or was that just within the last month? Because I don't remember months and months ago.
That was months ago.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. I, I will not support the motion. I still think it's a blot on the city's good looks. And if you go out on the river, if you go to West Lynn, it looks terrible. So, I'm not supporting the extension. Roll call, please.
Mr. Neely?
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, consent agenda. Anyone have any to pull off of the consent agenda?
Nothing, nothing to pull, but I did make a request for our finance director. He gave the division of taxes. He didn't break it out in terms of how much was for the tax increment and how much was for the serial levy. He's provided that and I'll just pass that out. That's all right. Oh, he, it's passed out.
Yeah, we have it, yeah.
Oh, you've got it. Okay. Good.
Mr. Mayor, move the consent agenda.
Point of order.
Seconded, okay, point of order.
Real quick, I see that there's some meeting minutes in here that I really can't vote for or against. So, is that all right?
It'll be okay.
Okay.
Roll, roll call. Mr. Neely.
Aye.
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 She missed Mr. Benneville.
He was going to abstain.
Still got to call him.
That's fine.
Well, just real quick, I, I think I can still vote on some of these consent agenda items, right? Other than some meeting minutes. So, I, I don't understand.
No, they already passed, so it doesn't really matter. It's a moot point.
Four to zero.
Yes, right. Okay.
Leave it that way. Okay, that's the formal agenda. I have a, an item that came in from the League of Oregon Cities. I'm, I'm not sure if you other got copies of this. I don't think so. You should, the, the league has been fighting the battle over Measure 7. You all remember Measure 7, which is the takings issue?
Right.
And they've run up a significant legal bill. And they sent a letter asking if Oregon City would contribute to their war chest. And what they're asking for here is 3% of our total annual telephone franchise receipts, which comes to $6,390 that they would like to have to support their efforts.
Didn't we already give these guys five grand?
Mayor, I believe, I believe the, the 3% would be for the telecommunications franchise argument, not Measure 7.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say Measure 7?
Yeah. We did contribute, we did contribute to Measure 7.
Sorry, I'm thinking of one. Yeah, this is on telecommunications. I said Measure 7.
I'll say, and now you're confusing.
Sorry about that. Anyhow, they want $6,390 bucks to fight on the telecommunications issue, which is Quest not wanting to pay their, their fees, their franchise fees. If, if the cities lose on this, we, we stand to lose almost the total, Mr. Manager, didn't we decide that the, it's almost the total of this $212,000 would be?
That is correct.
So, we're about $200,000 we stand to lose.
About $212,000, yeah.
$6,300 to help fight the bill. Rather than go through the whole thing, I mean, we spent an hour on this at the mayor's meeting trying to understand the, all the issues on this. But essentially, a court in Washington State has ruled in their favor. And so, they are now attempting to withhold all the money.
Yeah, it's, it's a case that arose in Washington, City of Auburn. In fact, we were on the case, our Seattle office, representing the cities. They won on one issue and they lost on the Telecommunications Act issue, which was a view by the Ninth Circuit that the federal act preempts local governments in most of the regulations they do and the fees they collect. It's a bad decision. It's got to go up.
But they're using as the hook is to not pay their bills.
That's correct.
They even ask us to, to send the money back.
That's correct.
Which fortunately, our manager didn't do.
But some cities did.
Some cities did.
So, I, we'd like your opinion whether we should.
Well, I have a question for the attorney before we go on then. So, legally, they can not pay their fees until this is adjudicated?
Our view is that they must pay the fees regardless.
Then what?
They're taking a preemptive step.
Then what is our?
Go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to form the thought.
Remedy?
What, yeah, I mean, if, if we are granting them a franchise, how do we revoke the franchise while this is, is, if they're not paying, I mean, if I don't pay my rent, I get evicted.
Right.
So, there's the question.
Their view is that the 1996 Telecommunications Act automatically invalidates all local franchises. They have a court agreeing with them on some fact situations in Washington. Quest has taken the position that that case has to be interpreted that they don't have to pay anything. We could revoke the franchise. What you will do is get yourself in on the litigation and although it's noble to pay money to your lawyers, my suggestion, my suggestion is that you fund the, the Quest case and the league's participation because it's representing all of us and don't do it individually. There are about eight cities that have jumped in and cities like Portland can afford to do that. I don't think we can.
Could I suggest that rather us take action here, that it come out as an agenda item in the next, just simply, just simply because we don't have the letter in front of us and so forth and I'm a slow reader. So, if we could have it on the next agenda item.
What's the deadline?
I've got the letter in front of me.
Do you actually have the wrong letter?
Yeah. Is it? I don't believe there was an urgency in terms of the amount, the timeframe, other than as soon as, you know, they, they want a commitment so that they can see how many cities.
I, I suggest we bring it on the next.
Okay, great.
Can we, can, can we, do we have a general consensus that we are, so that, so that the manager could, could go ahead and let them know that we are going to?
Consider it and that there was considerable interest in pursuing it, but we haven't made a commitment.
Yeah, okay. We'll do it that way. And we'll have the numbers. I believe Mayor Williams has got some of the numbers, but we'll have the numbers there that reflect what the appropriate amounts are that we expect from Quest.
Second, okay.
No.
Second on my head is that some time ago, I suggested, and I think it was agreement, that we would investigate what charges might be leveled against West Lynn for use of a water tower number two. And it raised some hackles on the back of the necks of all the commissioners over there. And now, they would like to discuss the issue more thoroughly. The original plan that the Water Board, master plan put forward was that the top, that water tower should, is an integral part of the South Fork system and therefore they might think about buying it and integrating into their system. That didn't seem to me with too much approval from staff or at the time, the commissioners. My thinking on it was that we have a $600,000 repair to make and that $600,000 is capital which, which drove the rates up. That, that capital is in the rates and that's why we raised the rates partly. In the calculations, if you look at it, it's a significant part of our water rate raise. My, my still think that I, I would rather see the tower in their, in Water Board's hands and let them pick up the bill, but.
Are we talking about Mountain View?
Yeah, Mountain View.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I guess we need an expression here. Those of us that go to the Water Board need a little expression of, of thought about what you other commissioners think about. I know it's new and you don't know, but if you can.
I think it's new and we don't know.
So, so.
I was just going to ask a question. I know we, we procured two pieces of property across the street from that water tower. And that was for potential future public works purposes. Was that visualized as being used in conjunction with property that was, that's associated with that water tower?
Yes. As you may recall, right now, we're about to decommission reservoir number one. That's the small tank that has no cover. It's real old and it's not safe from a clean water standpoint. And we're also just starting our water master plan to figure out what kind of storage the city's going to need in the next 20 years. And the properties we purchased, along with the area that reservoir number one now, where it now sits, would likely be a good place for a new reservoir to replace number one and complement number two, depending on what our supply and demand needs are. So, I guess I would caution the commission in making any decision particularly rapidly because that is a major piece of our infrastructure.
Didn't intend that.
Yeah, right, right, right. But I guess in terms of that being a major component of our infrastructure, finding out what our storage needs are, what the costs of a new reservoir would be to offset perhaps if West Lynn took over or South Fork took over one of them, those are issues that are going to be studied in a fair amount of detail in the next 12 months. And, but you're, that, that area, that entire area is water area in terms of reservoir space. So, does that answer you?
It does. It was intended, it was intended for water. It was not intended for other purposes for public works when that land was procured.
No, unless we found out we didn't need it or the water master plan isn't complete.
Yeah.
But I suspect we're going to find that we need more storage capacity and that's a prime location to put it at. It's also a good location because those two reservoirs, then you can drain one and use the other one for backup storage and you can put in various plumbing so that you can serve different parts of the city if you have to take one out, et cetera.
Would that area, should a reservoir be built there? Would that reservoir, could it supply the potential industrial area at the campus that we're talking about or is that out of that elevation area?
Oh, they're all set up to, the new reservoir, well, the existing reservoir does serve the hilltop area. There's already a pumping system that does that. And the new reservoir, we, you know, haven't designed it, haven't sized it, haven't done anything with it. But what we would try to do is make them absolutely alternate so that if you took one out, you could supply the rest of the city. Because it's really good for a city this size, just even for fire flows, if there was an emergency, to have good backup. Not all cities have two reservoirs, but.
Well, part of the issue is that West Lynn doesn't have any. They haven't done, they haven't done their share in, in this issue.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, having served on South Fork for a while now and understanding the issues and. Well, having served on South Fork for a while now, and understanding the issues, and I guess, you know, I'm riding the fence on this one, whether we should... Whether we should transfer the deal to South Fork. I guess, in my estimation, maybe what we should do is go back and look at the storage that we've been providing to the city of West Lynn over the last twenty-five, or thirty, or fifty years, or whatever it is, and bill them for it. I think, given the attitude that we're seeing from the other side of the river, and the fact that they had a reservoir site selected, and the people of West Lynn chose not to have any water storage, it becomes less of our responsibility in Oregon City to provide the city of West Lynn storage of water, given that the reservoir belongs to the city of Oregon City and not to the South Fork Water Board. It really is incumbent upon the city of West Lynn to provide their own water storage. And that's kind of the way I'm looking at it at this point in time, that if they wish us to store water for them over and above the flow that they get from South Fork under the contract, that we should charge them for that storage.
Be honest.
So, Dan...
Which would love you.
Jack and I have actually agreed on one, this one issue.
So, Dan, it's pretty much the similar concept of that wheeling that they...
Well, no, it's not... It's not really about wheeling at all.
No, it's not wheeling, but it's regards to the maintenance of lines that cities own and the type of thing.
The fact that they wanted to charge Lake Oswego for their use of their lines.
Oh, right. It's exactly the same as that issue, yes.
Exactly the same thing. That's what I mean by that, in regards to the wheeling. And so, that is kind of different than what you're saying about actually turning the reservoir over to South Fork, in essence, just billing them for water you've stored in the past twenty-five years.
Right, which, you know, we have a couple of options here. My own... My real consideration is that we have the six-hundred-thousand dollars to invest in an old reservoir, and if they're willing to pay the six-hundred thousand and pay us something for the reservoir, it looks like we could hold water rates where they are, and maybe even change the rates. So, that was my interest. I don't...
I have a question, and you... I don't attend the Water Board meetings, and I'm still trying to find time...
Oh, you're missing a lot of fun.
Trying to find time to really get my arms around that whole South Fork Water Board. But if it's six-hundred thousand dollars, somebody has to pay for it, and our rates fall from what we... I mean, South Fork would have to make the improvements. Would that affect their rates that they sell water to us?
But wholesale rates go up substantially less than the retail rates.
Because you're spreading it over the whole load. In Clackamas River waters is... Actually, if we're talking about charging for storage, they're part of this routine too, because some of the water is stored there for them.
Correct.
So, to avoid all those kind of complications and paying, it seems simpler to put it into one unit's hands and let them operate the whole system, especially if they've got the cash, and they have the cash. Yes, sir.
I would personally like a little bit... Well, I'd like a lot more information on this. I mean, I'm not getting much. I got a little bit from Nancy, very little from the two people on the board, and it's too big of a decision to make.
I didn't talk about making it out.
I know, but I mean, I would like... I would like some information in the next packet.
Can I make a suggestion at this point?
Excuse me, there is some information you can give. If you took the Water Board's master plan and copied those pages out of there, described the system, describes what it is, and tells us this.
Right. I think that as the master plan occurs, everybody's gonna learn more about.
Well, I think... I think maybe more to the point, and on a little bit faster schedule, it might not hurt for us to do half hour, forty-five minutes with Dan Bradley and Nancy in a work session environment sometime in the next thirty to forty-five days. I think there are some issues coming up at the Water Board that... And in fact, there are some other issues coming up at the Water Board that we really ought to talk about in a little bit more informal setting. And so, I would make that suggestion, that we get Mr. Bradley and Ms. Crushour together with us in a work session setting for forty-five minutes or an hour, whatever you think it would take, and have that discussion.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Would it be possible for... You're bringing up some other topics that we might talk about. Maybe you could email the manager list or...
I think Mr. Bradley could help educate you on that, actually.
Sure.
Did staff get the idea that we're just giving kind of what the information's already out there from the mayor? You understood that? Okay, thank... Yeah, we're not printing anything new, we're not going out and doing any studies, not taking any more staff time, just copy time.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that wasn't... The information is what I'm talking about before that. Okay, thank you.
It's available, right. No need to study it again. Honey, yes, Doug?
Are we done with that one? A few more items?
Yes.
I would like to see us come back to the Washington Street Bridge. It appears that the Seventeenth Street will be closed. I realize that something's gone forward, but there are certain things that have come through the public process that we're not even aware of. I... The only things that we've ever gotten in the public process, I think a letter from a couple of citizens, and I think specific input from the McGlaughlin Neighborhood Association, Park Place Neighborhood Association. There were all these cards that were filled in in terms of design, of the railing and so forth, and I don't know if we ever heard the public input on that.
We went through a very, very extensive public process on this.
I don't think we heard it.
It was all in the EAS that was attached to your commission.
Including the railing design and all that?
I'm pretty sure...
Can we give a quick update?
Go ahead.
First of all, the railing design isn't finished yet, and we're putting together the public meeting for... It's right... It's in our September work plan to get that... To get the packets or the letters out to the people that signed up. We have a list of people that wanted to participate in that. And we've gone through this... Well, we went through the funding issue in May and June, which Brian and Brian and I sweated out when we thought we might lose a big chunk of the funding for the bridge. But so, that slowed us down a little bit, and once we learned we were gonna get full funding again, we were moving ahead with design, and they simply haven't been ready for some of that. But we are gonna complete the railing processes we discussed. The citizens will decide what kind of railing they want. In terms of the Seventeenth Street closure, I just want to remind the commission that we didn't... That lane that would have been also left... That would have been a left turn lane onto Seventeenth Street, we really don't have that many turning movements to warrant the lane. The main reason the lane was there was to reflect the left turn lane across the street coming southbound on Washington, and it really is a safety design issue. So, I don't know if that... That would be how I'd respond to closing Seventeenth Street. I think we always knew we needed to have the mirror image for safety, so you're not swerving across to get in the right lane, but...
I guess I'm behind the curve on closing Seventeenth Street.
Oh, well, it hasn't been... We haven't... That is a bit of a jump, isn't it?
I think I know why, but I have...
That has more to do with the...
At the last juncture that I was at, we weren't closing Seventeenth Street.
Okay, I think we're mixing things here, because really, what we're talking about here is the project, the bridge project, which is separate and apart from closing the Seventeenth Street, which is related to the Amtrak station, which would be a commission decision at a future time.
Right.
I think these are two separate issues.
Well, but they are related, Brian.
They are related. They are related.
Because we're talking about the Amtrak.
The question is, is part of this process, the closure of Seventeenth Street, yes or no?
No, not of the bridge, no.
Not on the bridge.
No, it has to be...
It has to do with the Amtrak station.
Yeah, this would be the Amtrak station.
If it's not open, and the bridge is closed, then a lot of people aren't going anywhere in Oregon City.
You think?
That's true.
Yeah.
No, but at... Because the way I understood the bridge project was that at the end of the project, when it's done, Seventeenth was gonna remain open. Is that correct?
That depends on Amtrak.
Yeah. That would have been the plan, except Amtrak has some other ideas.
Gee, what a surprise.
The Union Pacific Railroad has other ideas.
Well, might as well be Amtrak.
I think that's a little unfair. I'm not sure that Amtrak had some other thing in mind. I think, and I have... I've read the documentation, and there was discussion way back when that Seventeenth Street was going to be part of something that we would be looking at giving up to get the easement, to get the platform. And I think that's been there all along. It's not something that's... Anybody snuck in on anybody. That was all part of the process.
What I'm saying is, and I never supported, and I won't support, closing the Seventeenth Street to Main Street without some other connection across there. I think it's a bad idea to lose that connection to Main Street without some other route.
Different topic. Anyway, and again, Doug?
Yeah, a couple more things. The charter review process, I would like to see that come on the May ballot.
I have... Okay, I can answer that question. I'm remiss. I should have gotten to you the suggested list of names. We're already ghosts, and you wanna look at the names, I'll get them to you shortly.
Okay. The third thing was just a question on what was happening since Dea's still here. What was happening from the wood from the Abernathy Elm? Have we... Have there been takers? Good. It was in the minutes. Our minutes are about two months behind now, and I happened to notice that in those minutes, and so that kind of triggered the...
Well, since then, we have entered into an agreement with the Oregon City Arts Commission. Alice Norris has put together a process, along with me and Nancy Crushour's public works folks, and Susan John. People apply through Susan John, and Alice and her group look at what they're doing. They're keeping track of it. They have contracted with a mill... Millrite?
Yes.
Is that his... The term, to actually do the cutting, because most of the artists needed something special, and he...
Do you remember what the date was on that?
It should be coming up sometime this month. We had set a date that he would actually come into the city and cut to order, and he's volunteering his time.
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
Long time ago, we had this kind of a, I would say, some commission goals that were set up, and we had a consultant here, and among those was something to the effect of enhance historical, cultural, natural resources in Oregon City. You might recall that.
Uh-huh.
We've got an arts commission that takes care, I guess, of the historical... The art... The cultural. We've got a... We've got a... We're coming up with a natural resource commission. We've had this one issue about who is involved in some plaques that were planned and so forth. There might be... There might be a basis of taking a look at another committee, and we could call it, I suppose, a historical resource committee, a group of people that we can go to when some of these issues come up. And also, it might be a way of better networking some of our heritage institutions that we have here. There are no real good links between the McGlaughlin House and the Clackamas County Historical Society, and the End of the Trail Foundation. The only thing that exists that I'm aware of is the Heritage Council that kind of encompasses all of them, but it's not always active.
And it's bigger than the city.
Yeah, it's bigger than the city.
Yeah.
If we had such a committee that would actually start looking at some of those issues, I'm just throwing this out at the moment.
You responding to that?
Well, the only comment I have is as regards to creating more and more committees. I'm seeing a lot of committees, and I'm concerned about getting people committed to be a part of these committees, and I see some of these that are like three-year commitments. And I know that we have committees that, you know, don't even have chairs filled in there, so I'm a little concerned about how many committees we have.
Historic Review Board?
HRB? We have HRB, which is Historic Review Board.
It's a Historic Review Board, but that's not the same thing. They only look at houses, buildings.
I mean, I guess rather than adding a board, maybe, given the fact that there are some qualifications to be on the Historic Review Board, maybe you could expand the charter to encompass the things that you're talking about.
It could be. It could be.
We can look at that, but I think the state has more to say about that committee than we do. The Historic Review Board has to have certain members based on their qualifications, so... Anyhow, we'll think... Talk some more about it.
Yeah.
Karen? Yeah, he's due, I think.
The only thing I'm bringing up is Mr. Nakamura emailed me over the request to be before a commission, and that paperwork was done. Do we have to do anything formal with that? Because we all agreed that we wanted something like that out front, so...
Well, I wasn't here the night you agreed on it, so...
Well, there was three people that agreed on it, so that's all I know.
I believe I sent a copy out to all the commissioners.
Yeah, to everybody. And basically, the question came across on the email of whether or not we wanted every time a commissioner wanted to bring something forward, that we would have to file that paper, and that isn't what I was bringing it up in the first place. This was strictly for the front counter public wanting to see... Get something on the agenda, so there'd be a paper trail, so it wouldn't get lost in the shuffle, and that's all this was about. And my assumption is that paperwork is available to the public today, or do we need to formally accept it?
I didn't put anything in front of the public until...
Okay.
But I only heard a few comments, and that was, I think, from Commissioner Benville and yourself. I hadn't heard anything.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is get a little more agreement on whether the format was okay, is it what we assumed was gonna happen, and can that go out to the public starting next week?
Would you repeat again the purpose, since I wasn't here to hear? You saying that you want something out there on that table, when people come in, they write down?
No, no, this is staff interaction.
No, this is... This is when somebody comes to the front counter, or they go to Mr. Cosgrove, or they go to Mr. Nakamura, they go to Dee Craig, or whoever they go to. And they say, "I want something on front of the commission," or they even come to me and they say, "I'd like to get something before the commission." I would... Here it is. Mr. Benville had a copy, but I would hand this to them and say, you know, "You can give this to the city, bring it in here to the front counter." They will stamp that it was received by... Who it was received by, the date, the time, and then this copy would be copied to all of our commission members, so we all know what's being done, and a copy would be given to the mayor, so you have a choice when this goes on the commission, or whether it's something that we even want to bring forward. But it's just a paper trail, because I've heard too many times in my first six months here now, I've been trying to get it before the commission, and nobody says they've ever heard from this person, like they've been talking to no one. And I just thought it was a good idea to bring this forward, to protect us all the way down the line, and that's what everybody agreed to. And that's all this is, is a way that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. And it says it's a city commission issue action form, just that we've received it, this goes to you, and it goes to all of us, and we all know that, you know, what's trying to get forward to us.
That a citizen has made a request of a staff person to have something on the agenda?
Absolutely.
And not the usual routine of the last minute?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And so, what I'm looking for is some sort of nod to let them get this on and used starting next week. And everybody should have gotten a copy of this. used starting next week. And everybody should have gotten a copy of this. And I made, the only changes I made were, all I was looking for was who accepted it, stamp it, give a, give a copy to the person and they walk away with some paperwork saying, yes, I was here. Here's, here's what I got it forward. Any agreement, any?
I have no problem. It does, it is great, more paperwork for you all.
Yes. I, I haven't heard that kind of complaint, so I'm, I'm thinking about it. I haven't heard too many people come to me and say, I couldn't get through the staff. I just haven't heard that kind of a complaint currently, so I'm not sure what.
I've had people complain that they didn't get the response from the staff that they wanted.
Can I, can I just add to that?
Not that they didn't get to come forward if they wanted to.
Can I add to that, Mayor? Because whenever someone gets an answer from me that they don't like, I say that if you don't like my answer, you can talk to the city manager and he's going to tell you if you don't like his answer, you can always come and address your grievances to the city commission. So we always give them the final step in the process, which is the commission. And all my department heads and division managers sing the same tune all the way up.
I mean, I think we did suggest this go forward. I'm just wondering if it is a, and I was here, I agreed to it, but I'm wondering if it is a, yeah, I'm wondering now if it is a good idea.
Yeah. Well, on the face of it, I, I don't think I like it, but majority rules. Yes, sir.
Well, I actually was one of those persons that did respond to the suggestion in the form and, and I think the idea is a good idea, but I was concerned it's even on my business is regards to have all these different forms and procedures and it's these forms and procedures that you never end up following anyways. It just kind of goes off to the wayside and sometimes some of them are tough to enforce. So that's kind of, kind of from lessons learned from the past when I've tried to create procedures. And then the other thing is, is that it's almost like it would be too easy for a person to come in, fill out this form and say, deal with the commission versus, you know, if they really want it taken care of by commission, that they do come to there and they sit right there, then they speak there on behalf in front of all of us. And I, I like that part where at the beginning of the, of the meeting that they have an opportunity to speak their, their piece and then we can either say yes or no, we want it on a next agenda item. That's just a couple of my comments.
Mr. Holliday?
Well, I, I'm guilty as charged as far as agreeing to this the first time around, but after, after some thought and, and looking at the form and, and listening to some staff comments, I tend to agree with the mayor on this that, and Commissioner Benaville as well, that I think maybe the responsibility lies in the guy over there in the tie and that it's his responsibility as the manager to ensure that the proper paperwork flow, the proper communications are followed. And if we aren't satisfied with the way he's doing that job, we have remedies for that. So I, I don't know that, I don't know that this is, that this is really necessary at this point in time and given our limited staff capabilities at, you know, I should put that, I should put that a different way.
Capacity.
Given our, our lack of staffing at this point in time, I think maybe, maybe this is the wrong time to be, to be forcing a new piece of paper down everybody's throats.
All right.
Is staff clear that we're not going to stuff this down your throat and we're going to throw it away?
Can't wait long, Gary.
I'm trying.
And he else?
This is another big dooser, but is there a plan to have a committee for the comprehensive plan and an update of that in the next several months or so? I know it's a big task. It's a huge task and right here with the charter review, but it's a big deal.
We authorized some money for that before you got there.
You budgeted for that metro enhancement in the budget committee adopted by the city commission. The process will be to put out an RFP to select a consultant, which you will bless or not. After that, we'll establish a committee made up of a variety of different community groups, some citizens, individuals, and they will work through that process for probably 12 to 15 months.
Yeah, I knew it's going to be a long time.
Do we have a starting date?
Yeah, date, the RFP.
The RFP will probably go out at the end of September, early October. Then we'll go through the selection process and that'll probably take four weeks at the most and that'll be back to you in probably November.
I'm going to pose a question, piggyback. Is the responsibility of this individual also going to be with, of course, staff support to pull forward the downtown community plan? I mean, we haven't made the zoning changes there. We've, we've made amendments to the comprehensive plan that would permit those things to occur, but they have not occurred.
We hope to, yes, the short answer is yes, but we hope to expedite that and get the zoning recommendations to the planning commission well before the comprehensive plan is ever adopted.
That's right. But will this person be involved in that process?
Either primarily or ancillary, yes.
I think we gave you authority to spend some money on that zoning too.
You did, absolutely. But still, that contract will have to come back to you unless it's less than 20,000. Okay, so it won't have to come back to you, so you did authorize it. We'll also roll into the comprehensive plan, the citywide visioning stuff that took place as well, as much as we can.
And the potential zoning for the water park master plan? There would be some for that too, right?
That, that would be a part of the comprehensive planning process, yes, in the downtown community plan, correct.
Unless there's anything else?
Oh, we have one.
This is executive session.
We're adjourned to executive session.